To the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Next on the agenda is the citizens' public forum. Do we have any citizens signed up?
I'm sorry about a form.
Okay, we don't have any citizens signed up. Next on the agenda is item number two, receive the director's report.
Good evening and thank you. I just wanted to share with you that later this evening, our attorney, Mr. Hager, will be providing the board with training on hot tax, hot, excuse me, hot tax funds, to use the ins and outs, when it is appropriate, when it's not, as we review these various hot tax fund applications and make a ruling. So that will be later this evening.
Great. Anything else?
Uh, no, not for the time being.
All right, move on to item three, briefings and presentations. We'll start with a budget update from Jennifer Otey.
Good evening, everyone. It's my pleasure to be in front of you all again. I'm Jennifer Ode, I'm the budget administrator. Last week, the city council adopted the FY25 budget, which includes the budget for hot funds as well as economic development funds. So I'm just gonna walk you through what is in your FY25 budget. So as you start to make decisions on what you're gonna do with the funds, you'll have an idea. So the first part of the economic development budget includes administration, so that includes four full-time employees plus a part-time intern. So they have 205,000, that's gonna be targeted for sponsorships and marketing campaigns. 200,000 of that, 1 million there is comprehensive plan updates, lab master plan, field house strategic plans, all the things that y'all been talking about. The next division within the economic development fund is beautification. 242,000 is earmarked for one full-time employee plus seasonal staff, so this is the keep, dug and filled beautiful activities. This is all the beautification efforts you see citywide in all the major corridors. The parks and recreation does a great job. The third component that is new to the economic development budget this fiscal year is special events, as y'all been talking about, taking on some signature events, so this includes Christmas, July 4th, Juneteenth, that is a best southwest event, Hispanic Heritage, that is a new best southwest event, as well as if there are any hotel motel funds that could be used, that are eligible to be used, that can offset some of these costs, but 365,000 is the projected expense for those four events. And then lastly, economic development incentives and support, so 2.2 million is budgeted for your development and redevelopment incentives, spasades, landscaping, all those things. It also includes the continued support of Star Transit, which is 56,000. And then lastly, the final payment for the fieldhouse debt will be paid in '25, and then that debt will go away and be paid in full. Any questions on the economic development plan? So this just kinda gives you what the total revenue is, what the total expenses. Obviously, you get sales tax for economic development, and that sales tax trend has been pretty flat, so we did not budget an increase there. But your total expense has come to 4.9 million, so it is dipping into your fund balance, but the city council has just recently adopted a fund balance policy, so we're targeting a minimum of 90 days in reserve, so you still have that target is 1.2 million, so. Yes, Mr.?
So, why is 90 days of fund balance needed for a fund whose essential purpose is to spend money?
It may not be, but I, you know, just show it to be consistent with the funds.
Unlike the general fund, the general fund, because it is the city's major fund, needs to have a cushion. Generally, except that county practices says that the general fund should have a cushion. Then when you get out to, like, for example, a fund like this, this fund, hotel motel, these smaller funds, police funds, and all that sort of thing, those, those funds are to be expended for a particular purpose. And so, the key is expend them, you gotta spend them. So, I'm, I'm not sure why 90 days.
Just ignore that line then.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm serious. So can we talk about that in the future agenda, in the future?
Well, that's the city's budget. To the extent that it's in your budget, you can talk about it here, not tonight, but at some point.
Yeah, because the discussion's not on the agenda. I got you.
And then if it's, if you have a 90-day fund balance, then that's appropriate for you to talk about your budget, as it's incorporated in the city. If it's the city's 90 days, then that's council's province, not yours.
But, but according to the bylaws, as a member of this board, I do have the wherewithal to request that an item be discussed in the future agenda.
If it's within the jurisdiction and the purview of the board and commission, then be true.
Forgive me, let me just, be my misunderstanding, and I just put it up there.
No, 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 you're doing what you do, okay.
Okay, so going into hotel motel, so this consists of one full-time special events planner. It consists of marketing promotions, wayfinding signage, it consists of all the event and tax grants. And we also have some special events, again, as eligible, those could be transferred over to economic development if the expenses, again, are eligible to offset the signature events. And then the field house HVAC and roof replacement at 1.4 million. So that consists of your total hotel motel budget. And again, this just shows you the revenue expenses. We've been trending actually really high on the hotel revenue. And then your total expenses are 2.6 million. Yes, sir?
Can you go back to the other? So... How much have we spent in wayfinding signs over the past couple of years?
We have not.
We have not. Alright, that's all. Thank you.
We keep budgeting for it, but we have not actually pursued that project.
I guess we need to find a reason to spend it. Okay.
Something that I'm, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Can you go back to slide? So I just wanna clarify, 'cause I think one thing that came up less, the next slide forward. Yeah, so our, where is our balance right now for our hotel motel fund?
According to the revised budget, and you also have a copy of your financial report that'll show you the actuals, the current balance for the revised budget comes to an ending balance of 3.7 million.
So those are dollars that essentially this board can allocate, correct? And then, for our budget for next year, looking at allocating 1.7 in grants and having an ending balance of around 2 million.
Right, so this will be your ending fund balance of 2 million, that's after the 1.7 million that we're dipping into fund balance to pay for, you know, field house and those other things that are coming out of this fund.
Okay, I was gonna ask a question, but I, I see you. I'm good, thank you.
Any other questions with hotel? I know the next item on your agenda is talking about the arts fund policy, you know, it's something we did talk about with the council. They approved the last week, initiating a, or starting an arts fund policy, so it's something we'll have to bring back to council to actually amend the budget. It's not in the adopted budget, but the conversation is transferring 138,000, which is approximately 15% of the revenues into that arts fund. So, just wanted y'all to be aware, that's not in the adopted budget, 'cause that kind of came after that, but that is segueing to your next agenda item.
Okay, next question. What, what was the genesis of this?
I know it was brought up to, other cities do differently. I know one council member was interested in having a fund policy, we'll be just allocating the money directly over to the fund policy, into the fund, sorry, of that 15% that just would build over time. And so, we drafted a policy, took it to council, and they approved it this last week.
Can I share something with you?
Sure.
So, tourism in Texas is like a multi-billion dollar. Multi-billion dollar transfer of resources. And so I think what the city is wanting to do, my own thought, is to try to be, establish more of a presence in terms of the arts, and maybe utilize the arts as a vehicle to bring people into this community.
And I think that's a wonderful idea. I'm just wondering why the city council doesn't also control the other 85% of those funds?
I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna leave that to the...
That's all I have for your budget. Anything else you'd like to add?
So, right now, we have an estimated fund balance at the end of next fiscal year of 2.04 million dollars. And those are funds that are available for expenditure, right? And those funds, and I'm just hazarding a guess, those, that fund balance should be spent consistently with the requirements for current revenue. In other words, we can't take that 2.04 million and buy a police car.
Yes, sir. It's specific to hotel motel use, that's only?
Restricting.
Same thing with economic development.
Mm-hmm, yeah, special revenue.
Well, thank you.
Next on the agenda is art spending policy.
So as Jennifer mentioned, the, through these new budgets, there's the 15% of the hotel tax funds allocated, has been allocated to establish and create a arts fund. It's estimated it's about 138,000 dollars, and through this process, and a copy of the policy was, uh... A copy of the policy was included in, in your packets. It was decided by, by city council that any, any request over 20,000 dollars needed to come to the city council for approval. Anything else would come to the DCEDC for approval. Mr. Hager, is that summary correct?
When they established the arts commission, they decided that the arts commission, as part of their charge, would have responsibility to administer these hotel occupancy tax funds for the benefit of arts groups in town, and that, and we'll get to that in a little bit. It's pretty broad definition. It's in 351 of the Texas tax code, which governs hotel occupancy tax, revenue expenditures. But it's theater, it's performing arts, it's fine arts, it's, it's writing, it's poetry, it's got a very broad definition. The thought is that, that we're gonna foster some of these activities over and above the theater. Obviously, musical presentations, choral presentations, corral groups and the whatnot are all, and some of our sister cities in the area have, actually have an art venue that's more than just the theater. I think there's the hope that the expenditure of some of this money will spur some of that activity in your community and bring people into town as well. So, there's a restriction on the amount of hot funds can be used for the arts. The whole 15%, which is statutory, has been allocated to the arts commission. The arts commission will at first look at that, and then it comes to you for basically ratification. And if it's over 20,000, as Mr. Pereira indicated, it has to go to the council for approval. So, that's the, although someone made the comment on last Tuesday night that that added to the bureaucracy, the hope is that it spurs communal response and gets these groups active, and gets these groups, and have the commission help foster those groups, and have interaction between the citizens and the use of these funds. So, while it, on its face, looks like it was more red tape, it's an actual opportunity or desire of the council to get the community involved in these groups, have some more exposure, and have a funding mechanism that if there are these, there's probably people that do these things we don't even know about, and because they don't have funding, may have an opportunity now to promote their art, because they can get funding for that. And so, I'm happy to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions from the board?
Not necessarily from, from Mr. Hager per se, but since Jennifer is the closest thing that we have to a finance person, and I don't mean that disrespectfully, this is actually an accounting question. And so, that is, in terms of the transfer that's gonna take place into, into the arts fund, special equity fund, as I understand it. So are we going to, at the beginning of the fiscal year, transfer them 138,000 dollars? The reason why I ask that is because the budget at its best is just an estimate. So we think we're gonna get 933,000 dollars, but suppose we get a million? So, if we give the arts commission 138,000 dollars at the beginning of the year, and we wind up at the end of the year, it's a million, how do we account for that?
That's a good question. No, I would something I would monitor throughout the year and transfer appropriately, so we wouldn't wanna overgive, to your point, or undergive either, so it's something we just have to monitor with the monthly financial reports.
To some extent, those funds are just like sales tax. You don't know what sales tax is gonna be either, but we have historical information, so those estimates are based on that. And there may have to be a further amendment. May, if, if people are staying here in droves and we get more hotel motel taxes, then they may be back to amend to add to that 15%, because the 15% is the maximum we can give to that, the arts. And the arts definitions under the act are much broader. They're not as specific as they are for the other. So if we give money to the Writers Guild, or the Duncanville Writers Guild, or the Duncanville Poets Society, or, it's pretty broad. All they have to do is promote that activity that may potentially bring us tourists. 'Cause we don't know, and we can do all the advertising, and we can do all the promotion, and we can have all the events we want, but someone's gotta come, and they gotta stay overnight. And we don't have a lot of special events, we have not had historically a lot of special events that have led us to have a, you know, we, we had the barbecue in Blues, and then we had some Fourth of July this year, and the whole idea is to jumpstart that, so we get people to come to town and wanna stay, or at least, you know, to me, a tourist is not only someone that stays here, but someone that comes to our town to see something, to do something. It could be for, quite frankly, it could be even in the statute, it says for business purposes or recreational activity. All those things are business-related to that hotel occupancy tax. This whole idea of the hotel occupancy tax is to have this money that outsiders pay, that we have the benefit of, to bring more people to our town, and hopefully spend their money in restaurants and stores, buy souvenirs, and all those kinds of things that people do when they come to town.
And I totally agree with you. I, I'm just wanting to encourage staff to, to treat the hot fund money like sales tax, 'cause what happens, you know, in previous life, I, I did this stuff, and so when the sales tax would come in, then once we knew we did, then we would immediately transfer the actual amount of the sales tax that was received. And so, what I want to encourage the city to do is that very same thing with hot funds.
Yeah, operationally, you get those payments quarterly, and so they need to be transferred quarterly to the special fund of which they belong.
To, to the dollar, to the percentage, 15% of whatever that is.
Yeah, yeah. And as well as the rest of the hot funds need to be paid to the hot fund, fund, so that they can be administered to people, 'cause there may be an applicant that applies today, and I, I'll pick on the theater just because they're, they're, that someone referred to as the elephant. But, you know, they may get a, a tranche of money now, and then they may have the opportunity to do something that they've never done before and need more money for that, and if we have it to spend, it, it could qualify as well. Whether it's art-related or non-art-related grant, or through some other mechanism. One of the things that I have not talked to the council about, and it's part of this equation, the council could potentially spend money for things, for special events. They can spend money, 'cause they don't have the restrictions that y'all do with hot funds. And so there's other opportunities, and all these things need to be done together. And not in silos, because at the end of the day, everybody that lives here, everybody that works here, everybody that comes here enjoys the quality of life that y'all provide. So, it doesn't have to be us versus them, it should be a collaborative effort of everybody. And so, to make sure that you have some events that are very important to your community, and they're signature events for your community, and they're historically significant for you, but they may not fit in a silo. But together, you can patchwork something to underwrite that activity, bring people, they can want to come to town. Historically, you have come to town to enjoy some of the events you have, so.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
I have one question, Mr. Hager. Under the approval process, does, does your position or your assistant have any authority on it? At the 3 or 5,000 dollar limits on these art grant approvals, or does it have to come to the board?
We had that conversation last week, documentation that we came across did have authority, correct me if I'm wrong, of 3,000 dollars to, to the director.
I'm sorry, are you asking about the art funds?
Yes.
Specifically?
Yeah, the art funds.
Well, everything for the art funds will go to the art commission. They will make that decision.
Yep, but item seven says approval process, expenditures less than 20,000 are approved by that commission and this board. So, if they're less, 3,000 or 5,000 or less, can you, in your roles, prove those, or do they have to come regardless of the dollar amount to us?
They have to come, they have to come to you. Arts commission, then you.
First arts commission.
Arts commission first, then arts commission, then to DCEDC. And it could be something that it becomes perfunctory, but we don't know what we don't know. This is the first time we've done this, and we want some oversight. And the council will trust you up to 20,000 dollars, and then they'll have oversight. But you know, as things go on, that, that may change. You know, in Dallas, I'm sure they allocate hundreds of thousands of dollars, the council never sees it. Now, they know who's responsible if it gets mismanaged. That's why they go through managers, like we go through ICE here at City Hall, and so, anyhow, that's another story.
Any other questions from the board? I have a couple. I don't necessarily direct this question to the board. What was the thought process between, which is around breaking up the approval process at 20,000 dollars? It would seem like having two different authorities approving this would lead to kind of a misalignment on an overall strategy of spending these funds. I don't...
Well, the guy that asked for that's sitting behind you, and you can ask him outside the meeting, but not now, 'cause I don't want the council talking. 'Cause he can't speak for the council. That was a council decision? If you need to talk to the council about it, then we'll put it on an agenda, and you can talk to the council about it.
I'm just curious where it came from, but, and then my second question. Does DCEDC have any authority to amend this, or is this purely the council's decision on the policy? Just curious.
The arts policy?
This, yeah. So we're...
That's council's prerogative. But you can, you know, you're a citizen, you got your right to suggest to the council whatever you think's appropriate. And you as a board can say, you know, "We don't wanna do this. We don't think it's in our wheelhouse." You know, let the arts commission do it, and if, and if you want oversight, then have it, but we don't wanna, I, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but...
Oh, I, you couldn't have spoken better for me.
Well, a blind squirrel finds an acorn.
Board members, any other questions on the articles? Next is the comprehensive plan kickoff meeting material.
So I wanted to use this time to share with the board that the plan, comprehensive plan steering committee meeting had their first kickoff meeting on September 9th. They, quite a bit of discussion about community engagement, what would that look like, using many tools, in the toolbox, but also using tools that may not be in the toolbox to, to reach minorities, reach those individuals that are not Spanish, excuse me, not speak English, that Spanish is their primary language. Talked about the planning process, how long it would take, and then the number of community meetings, as well as the number of steering committee meetings. The next steering committee meeting, if memory serves me correctly, would be on November the 6th. At 6 o'clock, the place is yet to be determined. There were some conversations about meetings being held at various places throughout the city. One location that was tossed out there was Kingsman's Caf. That is all I have to share regarding that item. The material that was provided at the kickoff meeting has been included in your packet.
Any questions from the board? All right, next on the agenda is procurement policy.
So in your packet is a draft of a procurement policy. This came to us as a result of us looking to purchase a vehicle for the economic development staff. In, in our research, we discovered that there is no procurement policy for the corporation, and thus, it was necessary to create one. So again, policy has been drafted, it has not been reviewed by, by legal, but once reviewed by legal, we will bring that back for formal consideration and approval.
Some questions from board members? Next on the agenda is resolutions.
So, in your packet, you have a draft resolution approving a hot tax fund application. There are other resolutions that are gonna be prepared for various other applications that come before you. The thought is that, similar to city council, there would be a formal document that approves that request, and with that, and with that, there would be attachments, agreement, development agreement, pictures, anything and everything that goes associated. pictures, anything and everything that goes associated with that ask. And that would be the official record keeping. And then moving forward, you'd be less inclined to look at meeting minutes than you actually pull the, pull the resolution. There'd be an order of, of filing these resolutions. So again, it's just in the spirit of clearing things up and making the applicant a lot more transparent.
Any questions, board? Next on the agenda is amendments to the bylaws.
There's several sections in the approved bylaws that necessitate a review and amendments. There are sections in the bylaws that don't adhere to current practices or for that matter, put the, put the corporation in a situation where you want to be in best practices. So what we'd suggest to do is form a committee comprised of staff, president, vice president, and another board member to work through the bylaws and brief forward recommendations.
Any questions from the board?
All right, the time is six thirty-five. We have a quorum of the
Yes, what's in your packet is
Planning and zoning commission for the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four regular meeting. At this time, we'll open up our work session and answer questions that the commissioners have for staff. So item four is where I want to jump in today with consideration action regarding the request of Monte Anderson applicant for an amendment of a plan development district on Wheatland Plaza Shopping Center, more commonly known as four oh-two East Wheatland Road. So the request is to amend the existing zoning, the future land use map designation is retail commercial. It is a P D and it is governed by ordinance number two four six one. So that's the document that's going to be amended. This is an aerial of the subject site. And the existing zoning is P D in blue. Downtown district is a slightly differentiated blue to the west with S F seven residential to the south and east multi-family twenty-one to the further west and to the north, yeah, Reed and Harden of Duncanville and McInnes School District and First Presbyterian Church of Duncanville.
I assume it's your recommendation.
This zoning request consists of five changes to the aforementioned ordinance. Those are section two point C, section two point C two, section two R, section two C C, which will be a new section. And then exhibit C will be an amendment to the existing exhibit C, replacing with a amended new exhibit C, which we have in greater detail. We'll explain all five of these items. So section two C. And this amendment is to identify L O R, it's a local office retail district, as the base zoning district for the P D. In our zoning ordinance in section six point zero six, B two, B five, there's a requirement for, for plan development districts to select one conventional zoning district as a base zoning district. And the reason for that is to regulate all the uses in development that are not identified as being altered as part of the P D. At the time of adoption, the ordinance did not identify a conventional zoning district that was signed. So this omission has caused uses expected to be allowed by right to no longer be permitted under the new zoning regulations. So that is section two C, cleaning up that omission and replacing it with L O R, which was the base land use that was previously permitted by right prior to becoming a P D. The second amendment is for the following four uses to be allowed by right under section two C two. So in section two, that's where all the uses are called out. And section C two would be to allow for childcare facility, daycare, community center, public, library, and then finally lodge or civic club. Now, all these uses are permitted in the L O R base zoning district. However, lodge or civic club requires an S U P. So this is the only one that would be changing from an specific use permit to being allowed by right, lodge or civic club. Next is section two R, and that's in quotes below. So what this section would do would exclude the residential development component from the regulations of two R. And I'll read and go into a little bit of detail what they are. So this reads, previously, all buildings over one thousand square feet in ground area shall have a flat roof and three-foot parapet wall to screen rooftop equipment. All equipment must be set back five feet minimum from the exterior roof boundary. So this in bold would add the word non-residential. So it would apply to the entire area except for the future residential component. So with this amendment, the request is to allow for perhaps not a flat roof. That's possible. But also for the screening to not have the three-foot parapet wall. So that's the request in two R. And then section two C C is a, is totally brand new, so it's at the very end of section two. It is language that will clarify the allowed uses within the plan development district. And I'll just go ahead and read this verbatim, so we're aware of what's being asked. Even though in summation, it's, it's practically as simple as that one sentence. But all uses permitted under the existing use chart at the time of this ordinance was adopted shall remain permissible for the duration of the plan development district. Any future uses added to the base zoning shall be permitted in the same manner as outlined in the base zoning. Suites within Wheatland Plaza that have been previously occupied by a use permitted under this ordinance shall continue to be eligible for occupancy under that same use. New occupancy-related conditions or requirements shall not apply to suites previously occupied or listed under the current use chart as the adoption of this ordinance. Some circular language there. But in general, it's the gist that it's clarifying that uses under the base zoning are permitted. And then finally, we have exhibit C existing and exhibit C proposed. So what the difference is, it has to do with that dashed line being the multi-family housing boundary. And then there's the two colors. In red, you have the three-story max of forty feet. And then in purple, you have the two-story max of thirty feet. And so that kind of gives some clarity and some continuity of being brought to a uniform two-story max at thirty feet. So that's what's being proposed there in exhibit C. And that really concludes those five requests of four oh-two East Wheatland Road. And we will stand for questions and answer them as best as I can.
So my, my first question is about the, the, I think it was lodges that were originally required by S U P but are being requested to be allowed by right. I, I'm familiar with S U Ps. We voted on that, went through that a few times during my term as commissioner. I'm not as familiar with plan development. So if this is allowed by right under the plan development, is there a duration? Is it similar to the approvals we've done for S U Ps? What does this shift?
So what this request, it would no longer have to be, have to be an S U P. So let's say a civic club wanted to operate within the boundary of the, of the plan development district. It would no longer require going through the S U P process. It would be allowed by right.
With the, with the S U Ps, when we've done them, approved them before, there have been discussions about if this, if there should be a two-year period or extended forever, or there's been conversations about traffic patterns and, and community involvement. If this is allowed in a planned development as a part of this amendment, those discussions don't, wouldn't happen.
There would, the particular use would be permitted by right and it would not need to come before this body for special approval or an S U P. It would be allowed by right.
So being that this was listed as an S U P rather than as the other ones are or standard as a part of the L O R. And not
Thank you.
My question is, what was the concern with a lodge or civic club in the L O R that it was an S U P rather than allowed like a child service to a community center?
So there, there are three uses that lodge, civic, club is permit, is allowed in, which is L O R, G O R, and commercial. And all three actually require an S U P. So there is no place that a lodge or civic club can be permitted by right by our current zoning ordinance unless they are allowed by right through a planned development district.
They do receive funds, of course, for future events, so, you know, future events don't make
Okay, I have a lot of questions. Going back to the beginning when it was talking about the base versus the conventional. My question had to do with this planned development that we're talking about. How does that fit in with the base or conventional? And then is any of this, this, this change that's trying to happen, this isn't anything that has been done with the planning and zoning department? This is something specifically that the applicant is asking for.
Uh, yes, so all five requests are from the applicant. However, I will say that there was a instance where the owner of the property expected a use to be permitted based off of the previous allowed L O R. Going through the process, actually putting in their initial documentation to have a base zoning of L O R, the expectation that L O R would be the base zoning. And then when the zoning, the ordinance was signed by, and duly adopted by the city council, there was, that was omitted. So this is a function of remedying that omission. So that's part of the reason that this is being amended. And then city staff said, okay, this is, since we're opening up the P D, if there are other things you would like to see, this is the time to do it. So that's where we, we have those, those five requests.
So then at that point, my question would be, you know, is this the type of precedent that the city is wanting to start in that we change what we allow based on what someone purchased, you know, when they got it? Because I remember where there was someone here before who bought something and was saying, well, I didn't know that I could do this or could not do a certain thing. And then after purchasing, they came because it was for us to change it. And so I'm just trying to understand, is this, you know, this, this start of precedence? Is this what this is?
Um, I'll say I certainly don't hope that we have a precedent or a, a pattern of omitting things that should not be omitted. So a base zoning district should have been, should be in the ordinance. And putting in a base ordinance at a later date, I think is, is the appropriate practice to remedy that omission.
So at this, at this particular time of the fiscal year, ten months out of twelve, we figured we had eighty-three point thirty-three percent.
No. There was not a purpose for it, there's not a discussion. And there was not a determination to omit. It just wasn't put in from, from what was expected to be in there and what our zoning ordinance requires.
And so, that's really good. And then the next page, same thing, well, same line, I have contract with professional services. Should be at eighty-three point three percent and it's at forty-four point thirty-nine percent.
Are there any other questions at this time?
So if you will look into that.
I'm going to check the iPad, make sure we're still streaming and then I'll be right back. Well, the, the meeting hasn't started.
There's also budgeted expenditures that are not occurring, such as awayfining signages and promotional and the marketing things that we had earmarked. So it's also grouped into that, so those funds are not being spent. The four hundred and seventy-one thousand that you do see year-to-date there is the tax grants.
Commissioner Davis, being that you've been on the council longer than many of us, have you had experience with a planning, development, plan, approving, planning development?
It's good to have less going to the fund balance at the end of the year as opposed to more. Thank you.
Any other questions on the reports from the board?
So, so my question was more from this terms of like with an S U P, there's a deadline. Is plan development a similar kind of, where the like with an S U P, it's a deadline, we can put a deadline of right. Right.
Good evening. Today is Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and this is a special called meeting of the Duncanville Planning and Zoning Commission. It is now seven oh-two in the evening and I hereby call this meeting to order. Um, colleagues, tonight we, um, we have but one public hearing item. It's listed number four on our agenda uh, to conduct a public hearing. But before we get started, um, I want to open the floor to receive any public comments. Now these, now these public comments are related to anything not listed on tonight's agenda. If the item is listed on tonight's agenda, when we open the public here, you'll have an opportunity to speak. This is just a general public comments. If there's anyone here wishing to speak on an item that's not listed on tonight's agenda, um, if you please come down and give us your name and your address, um, and you may begin your, um, two-minute comment period. Uh huh?
Roy Smilam, six twenty-three South Alexander Avenue. My comments are about a lack of transparency in our local government. I recently received a letter from the city concerning an amendment to a planned development asking whether or not I was in favor of granting the zoning request. What was missing from that letter was any details regarding the content of the ordinance. The city website has no details, but I finally found a statement from Focus Daily News.
Mr. Miles, I hate to stop you, um, but I must inquire, just, just bear with me. Um, are you referring to item number four, the notice on item number four?
Yeah.
Are, are, you, you spoke of a, a notice that you received on a public hearing for a planned development district. Is that the item that we're going to talk about here in just a moment?
Yes, but, but my statement.
No, Mr. Miles, you were referring to item number four and what you perceive as insufficient notice or, or some issue that you take with the notice on this particular item. So what I'm going to do is just ask you, if you just hang tight for me and we'll bring you back up when we get to item number four and you can be able, because that's the item that we, we will be on at that time.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Absolutely, absolutely no problem. Is there anyone here desiring to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? All right. Hearing none, Mr. Warren. Um, we don't, well, I'm sorry, we have minutes. Um, um, commissioners, there was circulated in your agenda packets, I believe, on Friday, um, the minutes from our last minute, uh, for our, for our last meeting. Uh, thank you, um, colleague Columbus for, um, for, for, for cheering that, for that cheering that meeting for us. Are there any other comments on that? And if not, I'll entertain a motion, um, to approve those minutes, um, as printed. All right. Thank you, Commissioner Columbus, for your motion. Uh, uh, thank you, thank you for your second. All those voting in favor? All opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
And who, who was the second on that motion? Thank you.
All right. Mr. Warren, we've disposed of, um, item number three. So if you would, um, take us away with item number four.
Thank you. Item four is to conduct a public hearing, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, for consideration and action regarding the request of Monty Anderson applicant for an amendment of a planned development district on Wheatland Plaza Shopping Center Block One, Lot A and Abandoned Alley, uh, acreage seven point five oh-two, more commonly known as four oh-two East Wheatland Road, City of Duncanville, Dallas County, Texas. The request is to amend the existing zoning, being a PD governed by ordinance number two four six one. The future land use map designation is retail, commercial. This is an aerial of the subject site showing four oh-two East Wheatland Road, um, more commonly known as Wheatland Plaza, with First Presbyterian Church to the north, along with Reed Middle School and Duncanville City Hall to the west, as well as residential neighborhood to the south and east. Here's a zoning image showing the subject site being a PD and single-family seven to the south and east, single-family ten to the northeast and further east along Lincoln Drive. Uh, the downtown development district to the west, uh, including Armstrong Park and Duncanville City Hall. This zoning request consists of five changes. These five changes are to section two C, section two C two, section two R, section two C C, and exhibit C. Section two C aims to identify LOR as the base zoning district for the PD. Section six point zero six B two B five of the zoning ordinance, and that's the section found when defining planned development districts, requires selection of one conventional zoning base, uh, zoning district to regulate all uses in development not identified as being modified. At the time of adoption, the ordinance did not identify a conventional zoning district as a base zoning district. This omission caused uses expected to be allowed by right to no longer be permitted under the new zoning regulations. Section two C two, uh, the request adds the following uses by right. Child care facility, daycare, community center, public, library, lodge or civic club. So all four of these uses are permitted in the LOR zoning district. However, a specific use permit is required for the lodge or civic club use. Section two R aims to exclude residential development from the regulations of this section. It reads, "All buildings over one thousand square feet in ground area shall have a flat roof and a three-foot parapet wall to screen rooftop equipment. All equipment must be set back five feet minimum from the exterior roof boundary." The proposed amendment would exclude this residential component from section two R. Section two C C would be a new section with added language that clarifies allowed uses within the planned development district. It reads, "All uses permitted under the existing use chart at the time of this ordinance was adopted shall remain permissible for the duration of the planned development district. Any future uses added to the base zoning shall be permitted in the same manner as outlined in the base zoning. Suites within Wheatland Plaza that have been previously occupied by a use permitted under this ordinance shall continue to be eligible for occupancy under that same use. New occupancy-related conditions or requirements shall not apply to suites previously occupied or listed under the current use chart as the adoption of this ordinance." And finally, exhibit C, existing is shown. In red, you have a three-story max of forty feet in this multifamily housing boundary. And exhibit C proposed would be totally two-story max thirty feet. So going from half and half being three-story forty feet and two-story thirty feet, it would all be under two-story max thirty feet. Staff recommendation is approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Um, at this time, is there anyone here, um, desiring to speak on, for, or against, um, item number four on this agenda? I, I think, so at this time, let us hear, let's hear if we would start, if you give us your name and address. We'll hear from the applicant. If you, ma'am, if you just give me, just, just give me a second. Let's hear from the applicant and then we'll take.
Why does he get to go first? He's not a citizen.
Well, first of all, I, what, ma'am, ma'am, what we have to do is maintain decorum, okay? So as the applicant and as I'm, as the chair of the meeting, I'm going to allow the applicant to go first to give us their, their same amount of time. We're going to give each side a, a, a total in the first round of five minutes, Mr. Warren. And so you're going to keep time, um, and we're going to do this decent and in order. Um, and at this time, so when, once you're in place, ready to go, we're going to hear from the applicant and then everybody else will have the same amount of time to come forward and share any objection they have to the zoning application. Um, and that's the way the process works. I mean, we're going to hear both sides and everyone's going to get the same amount of time. So I appreciate your, your decorum and your cooperation. Mr. Warren, are you ready? All right, if you give us your name and address.
My name, my name is Monty Anderson, twelve ten Green Leaf here in Duncanville is my residence and I am the owner of Wheatland Plaza. And the main thing that's, that's going on here, the reason that we came back is because when you, when you file a zoning application in, in Duncanville, you have to have a base to start from, the LOR, which we did. So it means the LOR is still there and it allows the things that you do, you have to have that. That's the rule here in, in Duncanville. That was in the, the zoning document that I got back. That's what it said, the LOR plus, plus, plus the PD. Well, when, when that document actually got signed, there was a mistake in that because it said the LOR was not allowed, was not. So it goes against, it actually goes against what's required by Duncanville. So the reason I came back was to fix that, okay, just to, because that's the, that's the way you require it. You require us to have a base zoning and then we go from there on top of that. So the, uh, the uses, childcare, community center, public and library are all allowed in LOR, okay? And the other one, the lodge or civic club is by SUP. And if you want us to keep that as SUP, that's fine with me. Just keep it as an SUP. We can, we can just give that up, you know, right now. We don't have to have.
Could you make that last statement again?
Excuse me?
What was that last statement you just made about civic?
The lodge or civic club that we talked about, that's, that's requiring SUP. You can, you can keep, we can keep that. We don't have to have it by right. The other three. So what I'm asking for is to fix, first of all, to fix what was, what was wrong. Because that's what your requirement is. That's the first thing. Okay? Second thing is on the non-residential units and the changing. I thought I was doing a good thing. We got fifty-one units approved in our original zoning in our PD. We got, we can build fifty-one units currently the way it is right now. And then the, the purple area allowed us to go three stories up on the front and then two stories in the back. two stories in the back. And we decided that we heard from, we heard from people, and we, we, we thought about it, and we lowered everything down to two stories. So we did that. We didn't, we're doing that, we don't have to do that today. We're, we're, we're doing that. We're just saying, in case something happens to me and I'm gone, it's down to two stories. And also, we went from 51 units down to 16 units. So there would be more green space and more parking. We're going, that's not part of this, this zoning, but the two-story lowers that down. It actually decreases the density, decreases, makes it, I would think it makes it better. I would rather, you know, I would rather see that. So those are the really, the only things we, that was just a cleanup. You know, the first thing is to clean up, I think, what is a mistake, okay? And the second thing is to make the, the project better. And as you can see, as you can see by evidence of our, our project, we started at 28% occupied when we were out there. Today, we're at 88% leased, and we've, we're also doing, you know, a lot, you know, huge amounts of landscaping across the front. If you've driven by there lately, you're going to see very wide areas where we're, we're doing, what I feel is really a lot of good stuff. And, you know, so I don't know if there's anything else, but that is really the only, that's really, oh, the, I guess the other issue was the parapet on the, on what are going to be the townhomes. They're going to be for sell townhomes. They're not going to be for rent. They're going to be for sell townhomes. And that was so we could build a pitched roof, a slightly pitched roof. The only reason we're asking for a change there, and, you know, with the equipment would be on the ground, when you have a pitched roof, there wouldn't be anything up on, on the, the top of the, and these, these units are going to sell for, you know, they're going to sell for over $300 a square foot. So they're not, they're not cheap units. We're not putting in, you know, cheap rental units of any kind there, so. That's really all I have, and really, it's just a cleanup of something that shouldn't have, shouldn't, shouldn't have happened, so.
All right.
With that, I'll answer any questions or?
Yeah, if you just stand by, Mr. Anderson, we're going to get through our other speakers, and I'm quite sure staff will be back. I mean, I'm sure my colleagues will have questions for you, so if you just hang tight. Thank you. All right. Anyone else here desiring to speak for this application, for, in support of it? Okay. Seeing no one else here desiring to speak in support of this application, at this time, I will ask that you all come up and give us your name and address and begin your comments.
So, Colonel, this is my first time in front of you, but I've been to many meetings with the city councilmen and the mayor. My name is Teresa Montgomery, and I live at 519 Allen Avenue in Duncanville, and I'm exactly about 15 or 20 feet behind this project. So I've been affected. I've been here for 25 years in that same location. And my concern with this project is that, I believe I talked to them when it started, which is in 2021, I believe, when it was approved, and it was a totally different panel that he sold his dream to, that no longer exists and understand what the intent is. It has changed several times. Some of it has not been run through you. He took it upon himself to change it. I'm asking you to deny this amendment. First of all, he received grant money under the first one to have this project done. So under that note, it's not just his personal funding, the city has money in it as well. And this zoning change is still not benefiting the citizens or my community. My, it's not. I had a petition that I sent in to the councilmen, the mayor, the management of 30 people that are not here, for one, in fear of being, you know, embarrassed or humiliated or not understanding the language that, you know, you guys have. So they're afraid to come here because they don't understand it, and some of it I did not either. We have been presented things that is not clear, and today it still isn't clear. He's wanting to put another apartment complex in the center of businesses who are already struggling for parking. He's already changed the parking by tearing it up to put down grass. Grass and trees are beautiful, I love them, but this was a community area where we sat with fireworks and parades. We can't do that. And every time that I've come in front of Monty Anderson, he quickly reminds everyone who seems to be deaf-eared, it's my private property. I can do what I want to do. So these tantrums are not accepted by me. And the daycare that's going there, it's within 1,000 feet of a gunshot that they keep on omitting to let you know that on the backside of Domino's, there's a domino, there's a gunshot. He's putting a daycare there. At the other end, there's supposed to be SWAT, which is an education institute. Again, it's a college setting. There's a gunshot that's less than 10,000 feet from there. Texas law says that you can't have it there. Our school across the street, 840-something feet away from where this gunshot is, he cannot continue to come in here and cause this recklessness, you know, recklessness in our neighborhoods. I worked hard to keep my kids away from guns, the environment that offer guns, tattoos, liquor stores, and I'm not going to stand by and allow it to happen now in my latter years when I'm supposed to be able to sit on my couch and take a nap, sleep peacefully at nighttime. This lodging that he wants to put in there, we had a question on how you're going to screen the people that you come in, you know, like, come in there. You're not a hotel. We have those around there. The lodging should not be allowed to happen there at all, period. So you want boarding houses inside of this building? No way. No way. It's not going to happen. So the zoning, the amendments, I'm asking you to deny him because it's not any more beneficial than what he had presented to the first council that approved this mess.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Next speaker, please.
Mylum, 623 South Alexandra Avenue. This is a rather complicated situation, and I was speaking at first because, because there is a lack of transparency as to the plans for Wheatland Plaza. And I had to put two and two together in order to figure out what I thought tonight's planning and zoning session was going to be about, and I made a two-minute statement dealing with that, that I had put together thinking it was this. I hear from Monty Anderson tonight that dropping it from three stories to two stories, that there'll be less residents, more landscaping, more available parking, which was a difficulty associated with the.
Thank you. Thank you. I think, I think if we can get, if we can give three more minutes. Okay, yeah. If I give my colleagues a supportive motion, I move, if I, if, if somebody can support me on a motion to move to add three minutes to both sides, to both sides, to both for and against, three additional minutes, so make sure we can hear the rest of Mr. Mylum's remarks, as well as I know we have another speaker thereafter. So if, that's the motion, if someone would second that and? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to add three minutes on both sides. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, continue.
Thank you. So I'm actually in favor of it being, of the apartment complex in the center being two stories as opposed to three, because I was privy to the details a while back, and when plans changed for Monty Anderson and he decided to go with three stories and this development, the landscaping was going to be less than the 20% required by the city ordinances, and in fact, it was only going to be about 5% of the property landscaped, and that bothered me tremendously. And also, there was going to be continual parking difficulties, which, as a resident, I was not interested in. So my comments that are not about this zoning session, I would still like to read the two-minute statement.
Okay, well, I, I tell you what, Mr. Mylum, if you hang tight, I want to reserve the time. If you have, so when we first started our conversation, your comments were around the notice for this. Now, if you have other general comments, I would prefer, and I hope you're not on my ti, my, my time is not running. I'd prefer, if you have other general comments, I prefer for us to hear from our next speaker, and then we can go back and revisit the public hearing comment, and if you have a two-minute prepared speech that's general and not on item number four, I'm more than, so which is it?
It is both, because, because it's about the abandoned alleyway, the.
Okay. So let's do it this way. Let's do it this way. I think that you've expressed the majority of your concerns as you prepared for on item number four. Let us hear from the other speakers.
Okay.
And then we can come back and get your general comments as it relates to, and we can tag that on to item number two.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. I am Julie Whipping. Address is 515 Allen Avenue, right behind all of this that's going on. First of all, the alleyway is not abandoned. Quite frankly, I am tired, tired of getting his trash because his contractors aren't keeping their screen up along the fence to keep it private like they have been told to do by the city. On top of that, within a five-minute drive from my house, which is directly behind his, we have six apartment complexes. Why do we need a seventh in the alley, in the parking lot? We have six hotels in a five-minute drive. My issue is, I have an eight-year-old daughter that loves to play in the backyard. My problem is, I can't do that. His workers have completely stopped work to watch my daughter swim in the swimming pool. I am starting to have an issue with this. Then I find out he wants to put hotel rooms inside his buildings? Well, how are we going to keep the pedophiles out? We can't do background checks, but yet we're going to allow daycare and this hotel right there within feet of each other? Really? Are we really stopping to think about our kids? When I'm here, I have to think about my daughter first. I get it, y'all, y'all get to think money first, it's the city, but I have to think of the safety of my daughter first. And I have not seen anything from Mr. Moat and these hotels that can promise the safety of my child. I am literally 20 feet behind his property. I look out my back door and I see his property with a chain-link fence. There's no privacy there.
Thank you, Ms. Whip.
That wasn't my time, that was still his, so I'm going to still go. It wasn't reset. Uh huh. So, you know, the other side of the street, they at least have a brick wall. I don't get that. You're going to put apartment complexes in that get to look down into my backyard on my daughter in her swimming suit? Really? You think this is an appropriate place to put an apartment? Are we, are we really considering putting an apartment here? Are we really saying it's safe to have guns that close to our elementary schools, our intermediate schools? I mean, is this really what Duncanville wants to be about? We keep taking everything away from our kids, but we can't seem to give it back. You know, there's whole much stuff that could be used in Mr. Moat's stuff. I mean, we can put amusement things in there for our kids. Why can't we have something, some kind of indoor playground for our kids there? Why do we have to have a gunshot? No way. Okay?
Thank you.
Oh, by the way.
Anyone else? I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We, we try to make sure that we can conduct our meetings with, with decorum. We, we try. All right. I don't see any other speakers here. I want to start questions before I get to my colleagues with questions, if you don't mind. I want to start questions with staff. Mr. Warren?
Great American shootout.
Give us a time so we can.
At 7:30 PM.
Mr. Warren, is there a, there was not in our agenda packet, I'm going to start at the base, there was not in our commissioner's agenda packet ordinance 2461R that's before us and amended, and I appreciate you giving me a copy with the marked-up differences so I could be able to see what's before us tonight. What was the previous ordinance that created this PD back in 2021? What was that number?
The ordinance was 2461, I believe. Yes, 2461.
All right, and so this particular, so the text as amended will kind of read, kind of read anywhere it's been changed from its original, right?
Yes.
Okay. So as I peruse through the original language of the PD, and in full disclosure, because of another life I've had in board and commission service, I remember this particular case very, very. So the base was LOR. Where was it missing in the original document that creates this conversation about what's missing versus what's? Where, where, where was it missing?
So it would have been in section two. However, it is, it has signed, it does not reference anywhere a base zoning district.
Was section C, 2C in place?
Yes, section 2C was in place.
Which lists out the uses.
It does, and. So section 2C lists in its entirety all the uses within the PD that are permitted.
But it, so while the original document had PD language about uses, it did not establish a base.
That's correct.
So items under C2, I, J, K, and L, in effect, childcare facilities slash daycare, community centers, public, library, lodge, or civic club are the new uses that are, that this commission is asking to amend.
That's right.
Okay. Got you. Item number R, all non-residential buildings, did it use to just say all buildings?
That's right.
Okay. And in fairness to the fact, most commercial buildings or buildings with flat roofs, it's more desirable to have a parapet screening your utilities, so you don't, so there won't be that eyesore. Is that a correct?
Yes.
Okay. So by changing the roof structure, you would then need to deal with, I guess, the utilities or the parapet wall differently, and so that's why we make this distinguish, this, we distinguish between residential, because it never occurred before, and I'm just trying to walk through what, what are the changes?
That's correct. So if a non-residential building were not to be flat, to have a pitched roof, then section 2R would require amendment.
Right. Okay. So I just want to make sure I'm, I'm tracking there. Can I come on down to?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
CC, and you described it, I think, in your reading in of the case to the record is a clarification of some things, and I'm going to want to go through that line by line, but I'm going to get to that a little later. Then when we look at, I just want to go over for my colleagues' benefit, what's the lay of what's different in, in the actual zoning ordinance document. And so then we get to exhibit 11 and 12.
We have many expenses that, that fall under the.
And this will facilitate what the applicant has requested in terms of apartments in the center and what we've heard some other comments on. What, tell, explain to me, I know we're dealing with some height here, and so we're restricting it in some cases, but it doesn't seem to be changing in others when I look at the legend. So walk me through what's the difference between exhibit 11 and 12, because when we read that in in the clarifying language, that's all a part of this request. And so I want to see what I'm not seeing in these exhibits in terms of height in particular, is what I suspect.
Yes, so existing exhibit C shows.
Which is C? Oh, yeah, it's at the top, okay. All right. Page 11, okay.
Yes, it's slide 11 of the PowerPoint. It's the exhibit, second to last page of ordinance.
So, we're gonna call-
Two-four-six-one.
We're gonna call these subareas, right?
Uh, yes.
We're gonna call them subareas, so when I look at the chart, I don't see any change, I see, I see colors have changed, but I- What's happening here? Make me understand the difference.
Yes, so the difference is that the, uh, the two-story max on thirty will be for the entirety of the multifamily housing boundary, whereas previously adopted, exhibit C showed a three-story max of forty feet at the front, being the northernmost portion of the multifamily housing boundary, and now it's a continuous two-story max of thirty feet.
So the net effect is, we traded, we moved forty over east. I mean, it's always been there, but we just drew the line more easterly, right, and we expanded more, what would that be, south? We swapped, right, we swapped the forty with the thirty.
A thirty engulfed the entire area, so what was previously-
That forty ran all the way back over to the other one-story buildings. That forty ran all the way across.
Right, subarea two A's in red, and it's, it's from the-
We took that out the middle and we went thirty going back up towards the back.
Yes, towards, uh, Wheatland Road.
Was front then?
Yes.
Oh, I was disoriented. You shouldn't have told me that.
If I didn't live in Duncanville, why would I come here?
So Wheatland-
It's to the north.
To the north.
I went to Egypt to see the pyramids.
And now it is proposed to be thirty feet in its entirety, rather than-
Forty.
Forty and thirty, now it's all thirty.
Okay. My, my technical, last technical question, thank you for walking me through that, it's been helpful. My last technical question for you, Mr. Warren, is, from staff's perspective, what is the difference between a minor amendment to a PD versus something more than that?
So a minor amendment to a PD is, uh, there's, I believe, eight qualifiers. This would not qualify as a minor amendment because it is a matter of, uh, land use and zoning being changed. Therefore, we must go through two public hearings, being the Planning and Zoning Commission and the City Council to get approval. A minor amendment, uh, has the opportunity to be approved administratively.
Okay. Did we refer to it as a minor amendment in the staff report?
We did not, however, the applicant, uh, in a letter, did use the verbiage, minor amendment, not technically minor amendment, I believe, the intent, assuming, is that it was not a major amendment.
Is there a site plan requirement in this PD for all these other things that we hear about? Because I know there was some objection to a site plan once before because everything was too fluid, is there a site plan being offered up for some of this?
So there is not a change to the existing site plan, which is the existing exhibit-
Eleven and twelve, see whatever those two we went through at the end, yeah.
That's the subarea exhibit. There's exhibit B, which is the public development map.
Could you point my attention to that, because I don't-
It is on, it is part of the packet, and it's part of the ordinance.
All right, well, I'll get off the air for a moment, and, uh, any colleagues have any questions for Mr. Warren? Not for staff, all right, thank you, Mr. Warren. Any questions for the applicant, Commissioner Columbus? Well, let's give the applicant some time to the podium.
So, in section, I believe it's two-R, it mentions that all tenants that are currently there will be basically grandfathered in. So my question is, under, if the amendment is approved today, would there be any existing tenant that wouldn't meet the requirements of the approval?
Uh, Ms. Columbus, Commissioner Columbus, Mr. Anderson was asking you, uh, a good question, I think, you talk about in the request that staff has accepted as or recommended approval outright, if existing tenants who do not comply with any of the zoning regulations within this planned development district would be given, basically, you know, given conforming status, in so many words. So, Commissioner Columbus, Mr. Anderson's question for you was, how many businesses, if this was passed today, could meet it without this provision?
I'll just let that speak for itself. With my bosses in the room, I'm very careful about what I say, so.
And we all use the name Duncanville in our stuff, we're, I'm a Duncanville high school grad, so using the name Duncanville as part of, part of the event, so. Board, any other questions or comments?
This is still a public hearing?
Yes.
My name's Steve Martin, sixteen hundred South Main Street, Duncanville. In conjunction with what Gasso does, and their July tournament only, we do others, but in the July tournament only, they bring in hundreds of college coaches, and they have to be kept separate. So Sam calls on me at the chamber, and I get our local restaurants and all involved. We spend somewhere between seven to eight thousand dollars a year, we fed over twelve hundred and something meals, and that's coming straight from our businesses here, so it's a good plus thing there, too, because we're spending money with our businesses, local businesses, restaurants.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions, comments, Mr. Salkin?
I have a question about the staff presentation.
I'm sorry?
I have a question about the staff presentation on page eighty-seven. Under budget allocation, you have hot tax balance of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars rounded, the ask is sixty thousand dollars, and then the after allocation of ninety thousand dollars. Now, excuse me as far as the source of the data and what's going on here, can you library, how this budget allocation line is? Because it doesn't seem like we have as much money as what that line is saying.
Keep in mind that the budget is not, we don't have, like, keep in mind that it's constantly moving. So, Jeremiah, do you want to, how you got to that part?
It was from the, I think, you have to, I think it's the last one, I think it's the last one with the ECDC and hot funds. Today's report, it does have like this expenditure amount as well as the, where that specific line goes from, which is the top, the contract contractual, uh, line code.
And just keep in mind, it's a bit confusing, but one thing that I, that I can tell you is that, I recently approved a new budget, and it will take into effect October first, so this event will be within the new budget year, and then you're talking about two million dollars, approximately two million dollars worth of funds. So that information is incorrect, because again, this is, this request is in the new fiscal year. Correct, new fiscal year, so you're working with over two million dollars.
I'm trying to backtrack into how did that, where did that number come from? So I know when I look at these grants and other folks look at these grants, they know where they're looking at, so that's why I'm asking the question, because I don't see it.
Yeah, no, you're asking, I wish I had an answer for you right now, just-
It was, it was from that, uh, the question was initially made for fiscal year twenty-four, but since it's been, it's up to the table, it would be in fiscal year twenty-five, and like in the presentation, that Jennifer put it, it would be for fiscal twenty-five hot lines from that contractual services line code, which would be that two.
Is there any other, what you want to see, is there any other information that y'all can have your discussion on this grant?
I have a couple of comments on the grant, that's okay. Let me start by saying I support this event, just like I support the other two events. I feel very uncomfortable right now with the idea of approving an application and piecing it together ourselves as a board to somehow make it fit into the statute by which these funds are allocated for. I will be voting no on all three of these for that reason, but I expect these to come back in a form that the attorney finds acceptable enough that he doesn't have to come and give us a presentation on these hot funds to set the stage for it. So, just gonna put that out there, just so that everybody, th- those are just my general comments on these, but I really hope to see these again in a different form, one that is acceptable, and is a little bit cleaner of an application. I don't know if it takes staff to do that, I don't know if it takes the applicant working with staff or working with the attorney, but if it is the intention of my boardmates to call a vote on this, if that isn't motioned table, I'll be voting no.
So, uh, I have time, because my events are March through April, these two guys are on a shorter term. March by March through July, I have some-
Any other questions on this, uh, application in this public hearing? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing for, uh, the Great American Shootout. Next, I'll open the public hearing for Hoop Fest Basketball LLC for an application for hot tax funds in the amount up to eighty-five thousand dollars located at fifty-five sixty-five Deer Creek Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-eight. An authorized president to execute necessary documents. Do you have any public-
That says, "Public hearing and considered."
I'll, what is the pleasure of the board on item seven-A?
I'd like to make the motion at the table, but because of the fact that I don't understand where the dollars are coming from, and I think that when I look at the budget line under the hotel tax fund, I'm not seeing where the adequate dollars would be, because while the balance says we have four million dollars, I'm still struggling where the funds are coming from. Not that I'm trying to make this a longer process by any means, but I just want to have clarity of the-
Is there a second? There's motion and a second, table item seven-A, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll conduct a public hearing to discuss, consider an agreement with Hoop Fest Basketball LLC for hotel occupancy tax fund grant in the amount of up to eighty-five thousand dollars located at fifty-five sixty-five Deer Creek Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-eight. An authorized president to execute any necessary documents. Do you have any public speakers, or do we have a presentation from staff on the agreement?
Basically, I have the same information, the same recommendation, that we reimburse them for their promotion of the city and for their promotion of the hotels. Seeing as how we cannot, um, we cannot apply funds based on a sporting event, and this is a particular sporting event, but they do bring in a considerable amount of tourism. So my suggestion, or my recommendation is that we do give them the reimbursement for their advertising and their promotional activities that attract the tourists and the convention and people into the city of Duncanville, and we just make sure that the city of Duncanville is mentioned, and we, we use their receipts for reimbursement in that category. That's my recommendation.
Chairperson, you don't have a-
Chairperson left.
He had to go and take a call. Who's gonna run the meeting in his absence? Someone has to run the meeting in his absence, because we don't have anybody else, so it's gonna be one of the other board members.
What's the board's platter? Okay, I'll do it. Regarding item seven, uh, specific to, you know, my last, the Hoop Fest Basketball, um, seeking occupancy tax fund grant in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars, do you have a discussion to the board?
Board members, you have a similar problem you had your last application, because I think there's, my, my, my brief conversation with the applicant on this, there's, there's other, what I think qualifying, there's clinics, there's, there's convention part of this business, there's recruiters that come in town.
So are you talking about Gasso, or are you talking about Hoop Fest, because we're on Hoop Fest now?
On Hoop Fest, too. It's the same applies to it, that applies to Gasso, they have those elements in their quiver, if you will, of events that take place at, at the event, at least that's my understanding. The owner of the event is here, the operator of the event. So what you might want to do is fund a portion, remember, I told you, you don't have to fund all of it, say, I'll fund up to forty thousand dollars for the promotion, which is clearly within the parameters of the statute, in my opinion, as a convention. And then have them come back to kind of go for the rest, if they think they can qualify. And we can ask the applicant to speak to that, but you don't have to deny all of it, you can deny a portion of it, have them come back, at least fund the things you think you can legitimately fund tonight, if you're comfortable doing that. I'm not, not telling you what to do, I'm offering you an opportunity to do something less than just table. Because his event is in Thanksgiving, it's not in March, so, that's kind of a short term for him.
Does it look like she dated your events?
Uh, Glenn Smith, Hoop Fest Basketball, fifty-five sixty-five Deer Creek Drive, Dallas, Texas, seven-five-two-two-eight. This particular event, the seventeenth annual Thanksgiving Hoop Fest, is November the twenty-ninth and thirtieth.
And then, uh, maybe another question to him for y'all is, when, uh, one, when are you gonna have another meeting, and two, when can you supplement your request? Um, see if you can get some other qualifying funding.
I want to make sure of something before I ask that question, and that is, um, and I should have talked to you about this before now, but I'm not even sure if I can, if I can vote. And, and the reason why I bring that up is because, uh, I want to, I want to find out exactly when that will happen to me, and then I can say, oh, I feel that we can maybe look at having a special meeting to move this process along quicker. But I need to be able to participate, I'm operating under the notion that I cannot, I'm just here physically present.
Why can he not participate? I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Why can he not participate? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Why hasn't he been sworn in? Just wear him in tonight?
I have a, I have a phrase for it, but I refuse to. Some people know. Some people know what I'm, what I'm thinking. I don't know why. So.
You are correct. You can have, you can make a motion to, you can have. And I am in favor of him getting as much money as he possibly can.
Let's public hearing. I have a question for the applicant. You, I, I assume you heard my concerns that I laid out earlier. Would tabling this until October?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first at our next regularly scheduled meeting, until the application can be, the deficiencies of the applications can be fixed. Would that hinder you in any way?
Yes, it would. Because uh, I'm at a point now where I need to know when my budget is or isn't, and how or if I need to pivot.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
At what point do you need to know?
Yesterday.
But realistically speaking, because we can call a special call meeting if we need to, at what point do you need to know?
I would like to know as soon as possible. The reason being is because um, I know the value of the event. I know that there's only three events in Duncanville that put heads in beds, and they're, and those three are here. And I think that uh, as far as where the money goes in this particular event, I've got over three hundred thousand dollars worth of expenses, so we can pick and choose where we want to go. You know, so as far as promotion, transportation, or sprinting, or food, you know, we can just throw it on the wall and figure out where we want it to go, you know, uh, you know. Figuring out how we can get it done, but just for me and my numbers and just for my, my sanity, I would rather, you know, if we can kind of, if we can figure something out tonight or sometime within the next week, if possible.
Just a question, you are aware that this would be reimbursable? That you would have, so you wouldn't get the money until after the fact? And you, you show that you were doing the reimbursable of the event within our categories.
That's the same thing I've done in the past two years. So I'm familiar with the hot grant tax. As well as the Texas Event Trust. I'm well rehearsed on how the hot tax.
So suggestion would be to tune them out. It doesn't, it doesn't prevent, but it could under the legislation.
Yeah, we have to change the language to reflect the motion. We'd have to change the grant to meet the requirements of the statute. So you could make the grant, and if he doesn't qualify for reimbursement, I, I'm gonna tell you how this worked in the past. If I gave the money to this guy for a visitor center, and he couldn't show me the receipts, he ain't getting the dime. I don't care what the grant is. So if the grant is to reimburse them for the expenses as set forth in one-on-one uh, five-five, or three fifty-one point one-on-one subsection A and subsection B in accordance with the Texas statute, that's what the grant's gonna say, and if he can't justify it, he ain't gonna get the money.
So could we approve contingent upon?
Yeah, because he's gotta, he's gotta, he's gotta sign the grant agreement, and it's gotta be within the parameters of the law. The speech tonight is to allow you to have the applicants be creative when they come to you, realizing we have a limited ability as this board to administer these funds. So, and we want, just like Loisha told you, we don't want to spend, we want to give this money away, Mr. Harvey, but we have to do it in accordance with the law. And sometimes law challenges you to be creative. And that statute is vague. I mean, you read it. It's pretty vague. But there are, it does say thou should not spend money on a sports activity if you're in a county of over a million dollars, and you're not a certain size, and we ain't neither one of those things, because we're in a county of two points, two-point-six million. We're gonna try to get that changed for you all. So until then, we have to be more creative because of it. It doesn't mean we're doing something illegal. Don't, don't assume creativity means illegal. Creativity means they need to be creative, you need to be creative. There's other things we can do. He just told you, I'm used to doing this, but I did it the way some other one told him to do it. He's been doing this for a long time with you all, right? He did what he was told to do, and, and the funds were granted.
So may I suggest then?
So if he can amend his deal, we can approve up to the eighty-five, but it's gotta meet the parameters. And this young man has to be creative, and the staff will review that, and I'm not gonna give. I used to, Jessica James and I used to have a round with him and his people, and we've had a couple of rounds with the Museum of Cultures, because they were trying to get us to pay for stuff that we weren't gonna pay for, and we didn't.
So can we not do this? Do over EDC and hot funds? If we feel very sure that we can change the hot fund documents to get the money out of hot funds, then why don't we grant him EDC money? And then when we get the hot fund stuff straight, hot fund can reimburse the EDC.
But we don't need to.
I just told you, be creative.
I just did.
But there's, there's that, you, you are correct, and that's a very creative thing. You could buy a sponsorship, be the co-sponsor if you would like it to. Because EDC, I've seen EDC spend, city could buy a sponsorship and say, city supports Hoop Fest, and we're a sponsor, and here's ten thousand dollars, or five thousand, or two thousand. So there's ways to do this. That's why I'm saying it takes all of you. But we need to know what you're willing to do tonight. Tell him so he can either come back or do what he needs.
Does the agenda as posted prevent us from changing the funding source on these applications?
Yeah. But you know what? You could say, I approve X, and I want you to bring back something, Mr. Victor, Ms. Loisha, and Mr. Hager, and get us to.
Well, the reason why I ask that question is because we've, we are wrapped around the axle on the definition of hot funds and what they can be used for, and I will just say that that exclusion of sporting events makes me very nervous.
I understand.
But it is bulletproof, I think, if we just did a DC EDC grant through our normal funds.
What if we're. You can tell us to bring that back and approve it, and that probably makes him sleep well tonight.
Unless there is any reason, and I'm asking staff this, is there any reason we cannot use general DC EDC funds for this? Or any of these three?
Do you want it as a sponsorship, or do you want it as?
It's a special.
Whatever you recommend.
We'd have to treat it kind of like a special one.
If you do a sponsorship, that'd be easier.
Anybody? Open up, open the board, open up questions to the board on the idea at, the creativity at hand.
They, that's the extent of our creativity too. So we all work as well tonight, we have not violated.
You, you can fund, I think, some of those, but what you may want to do is, and, and I, I hear what you're saying, if it makes him uncomfortable, that's fine. That captain title, if you'll anyway he wants to.
We keep the tax goes up there and I just, that's not the protocol.
That's what I understand.
Just, just so you guys know, I did send you guys the thing from the THLA, which is a more um, user-friendly version of the same thing that Mr. Hager presented. And it's not as nearly as complicated as it seems. It's just a lot of information, kind of if it's new to you. But it's, it's there, just by saying, by promotional, that's not going around the code. That is in the code. That is one of the provisions, to promote the city and to make sure that they're promoting hotels.
Well, it's to promote the hotels.
And the municipality, and promote tourism. So how do we promote tourism? Well, by bringing people into the city, as Mr. Hager said, so it is essential.
Don't forget what I told you. Primary purpose of this is a local tax administered by local individuals for purposes, and the court will get great deference. And what that's really telling me is there's not a court in Dallas County that's gonna say, oh, no, you shouldn't have promoted the Hoop Fest. That's awful. They're gonna say, that's what the money was used for. It was a local event. It's a local tax. It's approved by the body that city council delegated that responsibility to.
And it's bringing people.
And I'm not, uh, if I'm asking you, if you think in your heart that you're doing something illegal, then vote against it. But I don't, I don't believe you are.
And you're not.
And, and, but you may not want to fund all of it tonight. You say, you know.
I don't want to fund all of it. Just put that up there.
Yeah, I, I, I know you all are very supportive of this. You have traditionally been very supportive of all these events that are on the agenda tonight.
You just want to do it the right way. I know, I know what you guys are thinking. You just want to do it the right way. And just to, just picking back up what Mr. Hager is saying, this is the right way, but there's other options. It's a CDC sponsorship or grant. You don't have to do, we've been talking about hot tax, so that's foremost in our head, because that's what the application was, but we have other means of funding this event. Um, and like you're saying, we can always come back with new language to make sure that we give them what they need, because they are indeed promoting tourism. Uh, so that's something to think about, so. Whatever you guys tell us, that's what we'll do. But, yeah. It is indeed following, it's, it's the spirit of the, of the laws, that we're utilizing that money to make sure that we're bringing people.
It's just sometimes not.
It's a lot of information for people who have the secrets.
Yeah, and you know, it's sometimes all the clothes that the tailor don't fit you. Okay, and you aren't meant to wear some things, at least I wasn't. And I don't, but I like to wear the things I like to wear, so it, it, and all that's to say that you can tailor these things. He's asking for eighty-five. If I'd known you were giving me eighty-five, I'd ask for more, you know, it's the but something's better than nothing maybe tonight, and then we can bridge the gap next time so that our applicants don't think that we're putting them down the road. That's not a legal position. That's the counselor part of my job, being the attorney and counselor. This is the counselor part, uh, so that we can do some of that stuff. Because he's got some time constraints, which is not your fault. You didn't ask for this. It was given to you, so.
They need time to deliberate. You guys need to talk about it and to make a decision so that you could, he will know what you guys want to do. They need time to discuss it. You guys also have to be quiet.
I would, I would suggest that the board make a motion to table with the direction to staff to bring this back as a DC EDC grant, which is perfectly clean in my opinion. And there's no doubt that it's, there's no doubt about the validity of that.
Can I ask up to how much?
Whatever, whatever we've traditionally done. Eighty-five, eighty-five thousand, six-five, whatever it is for the application.
Whatever the dollar amount was requested.
Yeah, make, make it a clean application, please.
Okay, same thing for, I can say that if you want to pass it.
Yes. And we'll say the same thing again. I know I won't.
Is that something you guys need to vote on?
Well, I think we need to make a motion to table, yeah.
Yeah, I think you make a motion to table, but the direction that, that we have been given, as your staff help, is to bring back a sponsorship, and we may do that next week.
In the amount of the ask.
So you gotta get a second.
I don't have a motion.
You entertain that motion. Someone that says so moved a second.
I will entertain that motion. Second. Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with the Duncanville Lions Club for Hotel Occupancy Tax Fund Grant in the amount of up to seventy-five thousand dollars located at the O Box thirty-eight, three eighty-three, zero two-five, Duncanville, Texas, seven five one seven three seven. Unauthorized president to execute necessary documents.
This for Sandra Meadows?
This is another sporting event?
It's another sporting event.
Sport related.
I need to speak. Of this. Steve Martin, sixteen yards, South Main Street, Duncanville. While these two guys have great events, Santa Meadows is totally different than what theirs is. We are the purest form of hot funds that's ever been given out in this city. The reason is, this is the seventy-fourth annual. I've been the tournament director for nineteen years. I don't say that the hotels are gonna be full. I don't say that they're gonna bring an external room. If you look at all the paperwork that I've done, that Lions Club are, in my particular case, the tournament director, I make all the reservations for the teams playing in the tournament, and the Lions Club writes a check directly to the hotels. Last year, we gave over fifty-six thousand dollars in checks directly to the hotels. So it's not a sporting event. That's fifty-six thousand to the hotels. Hot funds, pure and simple hot funds. So then we have the other things that come under criteria, as far as advertisement, motion, and all of that. But the bottom line is, we are a pure form, and we put the money right back into the hotels.
Any questions to the board?
It's a basketball tournament?
Yes, it's a basketball tournament, but the thing is, we write the hotels the checks for the fifty-six thousand. It's not promoting an event, and they have so many rooms, they say. If you look in the packet that we turned in, we have receipts to all the hotels and everything else that we did. And you'll see receipts to the Hilton Garden Inn, Hampton Inn, La Quinta, and Best Western. About fifty-five, fifty-six thousand, I don't have the numbers exactly in my hand. But they're all there. The hotel receipts are all in there. And that is pure hot funds.
Not seventy-five?
No, no. Seventy-five is the total, and we've got more teams coming in this year. But fifty-six thousand last year was written directly to the four hotels. Now, I just want to clarify that, as opposed, we're not the exact same as them. And, and while I still say they're great, and, and we need to promote them and do it all, but the Lions Club and the Santa Meadows Tournament writes to hotels, we make the reservations, we book the rooms, and that's for the players, not counting the parents, uh, the fans, and not counting the college coaches that come in. We have over a hundred college coaches that attend ours, but we write the checks directly to hotels. So that's pure hot funds.
Any questions from the board? I do want to point out that the application for this hot tax references seventy-five thousand dollar application from subsection F. Expenses, including promotional expenses directly related to the sporting event in which the majority of participants are tourists, which we are specifically barred from utilizing. I'm not saying that, that, I'm not saying that we don't want to fund the event. I, I'm not saying I don't want to fund the event.
Say something to you? I want to disagree with you a hundred percent. Ask the attorney here. Checks directly to the hotels, paying for hotel rooms, is the purest form of hot funds ever. And I don't care what the paper says or whatever, but that's putting right back into the hotel.
Don't disagree with you. I'm just looking at the application as it's filled out. I'll entertain a motion to table this until staff brings it back in the form of a different application. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce located Now conduct a public hearing to discuss and consider an agreement with the Duncanville Chamber of Commerce located at three hundred East Wheatland Road, Duncanville, Texas, seven-five-one-one-six, and authorize the President to execute necessary documents.
Yes, I speak again. Steve Martin, sixteen hundred South Main Street. I was told by our city manager, Doug Finch, to get all this together, present it first year. The visitor's center, the twenty-two-eighth is well within the law as far as the visitor's center or convention center, if you look at it, it covers a hundred percent of it. The problem is, we're, twenty-two-eighth is minimal of what our operation expenses is. And you cannot operate or have a building or anything else as a visitor's center. You couldn't pay a person, you'd need more than twenty-two-eighth to pay that person. The other thing is, this was tabled before. I really hope that it's approved tonight, because if it's tabled again, then you're going to be in arrears of the payments, because the payments should be starting in October, and they'll still push it all the way to October fifteenth, council, and then it won't be approved until then. If it's approved, then you're talking November before we get money. And the visitor's center starts in October.
Any questions from, any questions from the board?
I guess, Mike, one question would be, due that the ID didn't list the dollar amount, is that an issue?
I have some questions from our attorney.
Does ID here in that list the dollar amount, is that an issue?
Nope.
Any other questions from the board? I, I have, oh, I have a question. Why, why not ask for more? I think personally, we could be doing more at the visitor's center, so why not ask for more?
Because, and, and we do other things, we've got some other stuff. This is the actual run, the operation day-to-day, we handle calls. When the person goes into the city, what do they do? They don't come to City Hall, they go to the Chamber of Commerce. So we answer calls, we send relocation packets, we do all of this. We try to make it fair, I live in the city, I care about the city, and I'm not trying to take money from this city that we can get by. Yeah, we could use more, but the other thing is, with the visitor's center, any repairs and all that have to be done, and, and other things that go in for, in fact, two years ago, you helped us, this board helped us and approved, well, actually, we turned it in, and the board wasn't listening to it, and they were, they sent it on the council. But we did remodels and new irrigation and changed the facade and everything else, and an update of the building. We're going to have a few things like that, but I don't want it in the operation of the visitor's center. This is just a day-to-day, month-to-month operation of visitor's center. We're going to have some other things that we're going to want to do. Next year, the chamber is seventy years old, and to promote our, not only the city and all this, and I've talked to the city manager, and of course, I don't know any of you folks, and I, number one, I appreciate what you do. A lot of people don't appreciate what board members do. We just came from a chamber board member, and I, I appreciate that. But we are going to be, if you know the chamber building, the big long wall across there, I mentioned about funds to help, we want to put a big mural, the history of Duncanville. And we'll be coming back for funds with that and other things. But right now, I want to get the visitor's center taken care of, because not your problem, but I've had major problems with this visitor's center fund in the last twelve months. I've had some months, it took us ninety days before we got a payment. Yeah. I like that I raise, mine was raised that way. It, it took three months. Well, then that's not this board's fault, or it was the finance department and all. But when you're operating in ninety days in arrears, that is, that's not good. So that's why I kept the twenty-two-eighth separate in operation for the visitor's center. And there's other things, but that's, that's why I wanted to put it in there.
I, I would love to see more ideas.
We got you coming.
Any other questions from the board? Entertain a motion to approve this item.
And make a motion to approve the twenty-two thousand eight hundred.
There's been a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we will proceed into executive session in accordance with the Texas government code. Convening to close executive session pursuant to the following section, section five-five-one dot zero seven-one, consultations with city attorney or special counsel regarding pending or contemplated litigation, specifically a disposition of real estates. We will go into closed session at eight-twenty-three P M. Okay, the Duncanville Community and Economic Development Board Corporation, excuse me, Board of Directors, reconvened into open session. There is no action necessary as a result of closed session. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And we, we came out of closed session at nine-oh-eight, just for the record. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.